Recording.
Okay. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Akers-Moore, Chair of the Concord Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm calling this public meeting to order at 7:00 PM, 7:03 PM. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded. Following the presentation by the applicant for which I will allow the town planner or the applicant to share the screen if they wish to make their own presentation, the board will ask questions of the applicant. Following this, I will ask for public comment. Consistent with the Select Board's temporary policy directive and guidelines for public meeting and public hearings conducted via remote participation due to COVID-19 state of emergency, the public is invited to view the meeting as an attendee only and will not be permitted video access. If an attendee has a question during the public comment period for each application, they can use the raise hand function, and we will unmute one attendee at a time. If you are on your phone to raise your hand, you shall press star nine, and then you will press star six to unmute and to re-mute once you're done talking. Questions will be answered to the extent possible. All video screens will be turned off with the exception of the board, town planner, and the current applicant. Once the board has acted on an application, the applicant will be returned to an attendee and is free to leave the meeting. At this time, I would ask for a roll call vote of the board members. Mr. Freeland.
Yes.
Mr. Faia.
Present.
And Ms. Akers-Moore is present, so let's go ahead and get started. So here we are, 7:00 PM, JP Chase Morgan Bank, who is presenting for the applicant?
Deputy Alan Roscoe.
Alan Roscoe.
Good evening.
Hello.
Oh, now I can start my video. Okay, there we go.
Hi.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having us tonight. I'll start by introducing our team. We have myself, I'm Alan Roscoe. I'm the Civil Project Manager for Core State's group. We represent Chase Bank. My colleague Caitlin Flynn is our lead architect on this program. So she is present as well. And we have our property owner, Mr. Joe. So he is present in case any questions come up about, you know, events that happened on the property during his ownership. So thank you again for having us. This is Chase Bank Project redeveloping a site at 1134 Main Street. It's Assessor's Map 9E Parcel 3790-1. It sits in the West Concord Business District and the Flood Plane Conservancy District. And again, we are here as a redevelopment. We wish to redevelop the former Citizens Bank site into a better-functioning Chase Bank site. We've done that through more efficient parking and driveway design such that we end up with a overall site reduction in impervious area and still provide more parking spaces for customers. And also, the footprint of the building is larger so that it better serves the community. So just to summarize where we've been, before we made our formal application, we did several site studies, knowing that this is a site that's within the 100-year floodplain, hence the Flood Plane Conservancy District designation. But it is also a viable site for redevelopment.
Alan, if I can interrupt, I can share a screen if you want me to bring up the plans.
Sure, the site plan is best, Elizabeth, probably C2.
And so can everybody see that?
Yes.
This is our title sheet, so if we can flip to Sheet C2, which is our site plan sheet, I think that best shows what we're trying to do here. There we go. So again, this site is 1134 Main Street. It's at the intersection of Main Street and Baker Avenue, former Citizens Bank. So we knew that this was in a floodplain zone. Given the FEMA mapping changes in 2013, most of the site is within that designation. So we knew that we would have a challenge to overcome the floodplain issues that are here on the site, both with the Natural Resources Commission and here at the ZBA if we wish to develop. So we performed some site studies and tried to figure out the best location for the building that both serves the community and our client, and then also results in a net reduction in impervious area and an improvement to the floodplain storage capacity. So lots of challenges here, but I think we've overcome them all. So we had to position the building, and it just logic follows that it needs to be placed on the highest part of the property. So we've done that, and we've also got the floor elevation to be at least one foot above the highest 100-year floodplain elevation on the site, which is an improvement over the current situation where the current building is probably nine inches below. So based upon our grading plan, and again, these site studies that were performed during our design phase, we came up with flood compensatory storage at about a two-to-one ratio over the current available flood storage on the property, a net reduction in impervious area, and a larger footprint, again, to better serve the community. Plus, the added benefit is that it is now foot-traffic friendly. The entrance is proximal to the intersection, and the building is located within five feet of the existing sidewalk on the fronting streets. So a lot of improvements here and a lot of environmental benefits as well. So with that, I'll give you some facts and figures and where we've been. We made our formal application. We've been to the West Concord Sustainability Committee. We've been to the West Concord Advisory Committee. We've made our application to the Natural Resources Commission, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals ultimately. And we've got favorable recommendations from the Natural Resources Commission and from the Planning Board. We result in a reduction in impervious area site-wide of 280 square feet. There is a reduction in impervious area within the riverfront zones that are managed by the Conservation Commission or the Resources Commission of 127 square feet. Again, we've got about a two-to-one flood storage ratio post-development as we do at current. And we've got those letters of support from all those committees that I mentioned earlier. So we're here tonight seeking approval and your consideration for a special permit for site plan approval and for activity within the Flood Plane Conservancy District. And there are a lot of benefits here, so we think this is a good project, meets all the tests to be considered for a special permit, and we'd be happy to take your questions and comments at this time.
Thank you. Elizabeth, can you put up the current site plan? If that's part, I think that's part of that.
We have, yeah, there's a survey drawing. That's the next-to-last sheet.
Just.
Existing survey.
Juxtapose them right here, but just so we can. Okay, perfect. So I guess the first thing I'd like to do is ask if anyone, if Stuart or Robbie have any questions.
I do have a quick question while we have the visual here. Can you explain how the queuing for the drive-up ATM would work? Because with the arrow on the other slide, it looks like, you know, if cars are driving in from Main Street to the ATM, there's not a lot of space for a line to form before it spills out onto Main Street.
Correct. The drive-through is totally remote. It's not operated by a teller, but you would enter the site conventionally from Main Street, and there's a two-way access driveway, and then you'd bear off to the right to enter the ATM queuing lane. So including the person at the ATM is queuing for approximately four vehicles and on the site. So, you know, you would enter with the right-hand convention and get in the queuing line or run to the ATM, and then you would exit off to the right out Baker Avenue.
Okay, so there's room for four cars?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, so we received, we did receive the favorable recommendation from the Planning Board. There are a number of things in here still left to be addressed. Stormwater drainage, turning simulations, roof trade, all of that. Elizabeth, in terms of how that would work, I know there's some recommendations that some of this comes back to us or comes to us first. And then I see also that they're kind of listed as conditions. Do you see that we need any more information as a board to kind of satisfy any of those?
I do think that, so the Planning Board's recommendation includes those four elements that they felt the Board of Appeals should get additional information and just confirm those items. So the first item being just the final review by town engineering staff that those last questions have been addressed. For the second item dealing with the lighting at the ATM, so I am able to, well, go back to the TD Bank project where they did do a lighting analysis before and after, and we can determine that's a good example, and that's additional information that I think needs to be explored. I think it's not critical to, you know, the board moving forward. I think it is something that we can condition and have the applicant for the issuance of a building permit. We can, you know, we can finalize what that light level should be based on the Illumination Engineering Society of North America's standards and also just looking at the TD Bank project. I think we can come up with something that works. And it may be what is being proposed, or it may be, you know, less of a light, you know, light level. But I think that's a condition that we can work on should the board decide to move in that direction.
Okay.
I think the roof scupper is just, it's a very simple thing. I think that can be conditioned. It just needs to go on a different side of the building and not drain, you know. If there is overflow on the roof, just have it not drain onto a sidewalk.
Okay.
I think item four is, is one that I think Alan or the architect should go through and present the elevations to the board so that you can see and whether, you know, they come forward with some additional architectural changes or, again, that is something that the board can condition. And I would probably suggest that be based on review by myself and the West Concord Advisory Committee.
So basically, all these are things you could condition?
You, yes, all of those things you could condition.
Um, I mean, I want to come back to some of those, including the architectural details. But, you know what, why don't we, since that's going to be part of this, why don't we go ahead and if you guys could present a little about the actual architecture? That would be helpful.
Wow.
Maybe explain a little bit about how you got to this. I assume there were other iterations that.
Sure, yeah, I can bring Caitlin into the conversation if you can activate her as a presenter.
Yep, this is Caitlin, I'm here. So what you're looking at right now on the screen is the south elevation as well as, I'm sorry, the east elevation, so that is the entrance facade as well as the Main Street facade. The main building materials that we have used trying to fit in with the surrounding buildings is brick, of course, which will match the surrounding. We have some clapboard siding and, you know, the standard Chase signage as well for these elevations. And I do know that one of the main concern was the Main Street elevation, which is a self-elevation. So we are currently, right now, looking at a way to make it look more like a street entrance facade, even though there won't be an entrance door on there. Some of the things we are looking at, which we don't have to present today, is possibly something similar to the actual entrance elevation to maybe have it some kind of faux-tower element bump out so it kind of mimics an entrance on that Main Street facade. So we are, we are looking at doing something like that based on all the feedback we've received so far.
Elizabeth, were you?
Have you, have you looked at a different window patterns? You know, this side right here is not a window pattern that's consistent with anything in, you know, in West Concord. And, you know, whether a different window pattern, you know, however, the, you know, the muttons in the windows or the divides in the window, is that something that you've looked at?
Um, we haven't yet, but that's something we certainly can bring back to Chase. I do agree that that corner, it is part of the Chase prototype. So in other areas, not in West Concord, it might fit in. They call it a jewel box where it wraps both sides. I think Chase would be very open to eliminating that and going with more traditional windows at that corner. So that's definitely something that we can look at.
I mean, yeah, the only other suggestion is so more consistent with, you know, if you go down Commonwealth Avenue and even, you know, across the street at Dino's and this expansive glass is, you know, whether there's opportunities to, you know, to break up the expansive glass with, actually, you know, wall.
Yep, that's something we are looking at when we're talking about modifying the facade to look more like an entrance. It would be reducing the amount of glazing on that facade, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not so sure how much a faux entrance needs to be there in case that's just more confusing as opposed to what you're saying about making the windows more consistent.
Yeah, I, so just based on the Planning Board's conversation, it wasn't necessarily make, you know, a faux, you know, entrance, but have it be, just have it have somewhat more, you know, of a presence and, you know, whether that's, you know, as you said, just repeating, you know, this detail. But I think changing up the set of windows, especially this window, would make all the difference in the world.
Yep, totally understand. So, yeah, we'll work on something with Chase to get that resolved.
And just a question, because the WCAC made a point about walkability. If you're on the sidewalk on Main Street and you want to go to the entrance on the east elevation, can you cut through that little gap between the railing? Or do you have to go all the way around to the east side to get into the building?
There's a 10- or 15-foot stretch of sidewalk from the sidewalk within the right-of-way that leads to the front entry, and it's illuminated with gooseneck lighting. And, you know, it will direct your eye to the entrance for sure.
Robbie, do you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to see my pointer. I wish I had a colored pointer. So this is the sidewalk along Main Street. It'd be right here.
Yeah, so I could walk and follow where you were just moving your pointer and get in without having to kind of go all the way around that.
Yes.
Railing to get in, okay.
Yes.
No, on the south elevation view, that black line canopy is right, correct. So that sidewalk access is within 15 feet of the street.
Okay.
Robbie or Stuart, any other questions at this time?
I mean, one other thing that was in the Planning Board recommendation as kind of an open item, even though it's not listed with the four, was the signage and the pylon sign versus the other two signs. And the planning board seemed to say it was up to the applicant to ask us for a sign variance if they wanted to keep the pylon sign. I wasn't quite sure where that.
No, so the applicant will need to apply for a sign variance. A sign, a sign variance was not part of this application. So they, they would have to actually file a sign variance application if they wanted to move forward with the pylon sign.
Okay, so as what we're approving now would not include a pylon sign, and that could be added later through a separate variance application?
Correct.
I have a, I have a question, and that is, is this going to be a brick building? I mean, I, I see, on the right of my screen, I see a brick face. And then are, is, are parts of the building just printed on a, on a flat, flat surface?
So the building, a portion of the building will be the red brick. The most of the, most of the building will be wood clapboard.
Okay, right.
Or.
And is this the color of the rest of the building? Or is that just a, not to be, or is that to be determined?
So Caitlin and Alan, I believe this is, you know, this is the actual colors.
Correct, that's pretty close to true color, yes.
Okay.
And just to circle back on the signage issue, it's our intention to totally comply with this application with any sign codes. And again, if we come back with anything different, you know, it will be a separate application.
Thank you.
Anything else, Robbie or Stuart?
No.
Okay, so we've obviously received a number of letters about this application, and I think it would make sense to go to public comments and then come back for discussion. So with that, I'd like to open it up to public comments. Again, you can use the raise hand function, or if you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star six. Heather. Anything, Heather? Heather, Heather, you there?
I don't, I don't see any.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments then. You know, when looking at this, I've really been looking at it in terms of our purview, which I wish Jim were here, because I know he'd get into this. But Robbie and Stuart, you're both lawyers, so you can get into this too, that we're really looking at this as floodplain conservancy issues, which bumps us into, you know, the consideration of the surrounding area and everything under the special permit conditions. I think it's really great to hear that the applicant is willing and understanding of the neighborhood and trying to get the architecture to be in compliance. I'm not 100% sure that we have a ton of room to push back too much on that, but it sounds like we're all in agreement anyway. In terms of, Robbie or Stuart, do you have anything to add on that? I mean, I've been kind of looking at it more in the floodplain issues.
So the board will be issuing a special permit for the floodplain.
Right.
And that's the findings you make for the special permit is for the floodplain. The remainder of it is site plan. You, you will be issuing site plan approval as well.
Site plan approval as well, right. In terms of starting, okay, so, right, I agree with you, but I still, I think that, it sounds to me like what you were saying, Elizabeth, is that if, for example, we get to an agreement where we do want to approve this, that there are things that we can leave to you and the applicant to kind of, to come back to you with and not come back to us with. So I guess I'm trying.
The board is comfortable with that.
If, if we're comfortable with that. And I guess what I'm saying is I've somewhat, you know, we're not historic districts. So, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to avoid getting into that. In terms of site plan and how this works, everything I've seen, the recommendations and point to the fact that this is a good use of the site and that it helps with the flooding issues. And I don't see any other major issues raised by any of the boards or staff. So, except for the ones that we talked about, the outstanding issues. That's where I am. Robbie and Stuart?
Yes, I agree, I'm in the same place. I, you know, I do know the, the public comment that was received, but in my reading of the kind of issues and points that were raised, you know, several of which I think were more properly with NRC and dealt with by NRC appropriately. I think most of those were addressed in some form. I don't see anything material that gives me any pause here. And, you know, the other benefit, I think, was the applicant, you know, kindly following the Sustainability Director's recommendations on the electric heat pumps. So another benefit there, just as we're looking at the, the overall spirit of the project and in going through the special permit kind of factors, you know, I, I am able to kind of check the box on all of those and, and supportive of this.
I, Stuart, any comments?
Nope, I have nothing to add.
All right, so you know what, Robbie's saying that, let's just, why don't we just run through 11-6?
Sure.
So we can, you know, make sure we're all on the same page here. Impacts on economic or community needs. I think we've checked that box off right now. We have a empty building. Traffic flow and safety concerns. Now that all will be in engineering, right, Elizabeth? The additional turning studies and et cetera.
So the engineering staff has reviewed the plans. Their comments are that this is an improvement as far as the interior circulation compared to the existing site and allowing additional queuing as people come off of Main Street. Currently, you come off and you have to immediately take a right into the parking lot. But reflective in the conditions is the need for some additional interior signage, stops, you know, sign at the ATM.
Right.
Overall, engineering's review is that this is an improvement as far as vehicle circulation.
Great, and again, the rest can be conditioned upon you receiving word from town engineering. They're happy with the additional signage.
There's conditions in the Planning Board's recommendation to address that.
Okay. Sorry, guys, I'm just spelling it out, trying to spell it out as clearly as possible. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. That is also, we just talked about the sustainability. I haven't heard any problems with utilities and other public services.
Nope, the fire department is in support of the project because currently the finished floor of the building is eight to nine inches below the floodplain. They are also supportive of the fact that this new building will upgrade fire alarm, emergency, you know, systems. And so they're in support of the project as well.
Impacts on neighborhood character, which we've been talking about with the architecture. It sounds like there is understanding on the applicant's part there. I would say this has been a bank and it will be a bank. Robbie or Stuart, you have anything else to add on that?
You know, there's another bank across Baker already, so it's, you know, it's not really changing the character of what's in place now.
Impacts on the natural environment. Impacts on the natural environment, I think that goes to the floodplain issue and raising this up.
The other, as far as the natural environment, is that the project will be an upgrade to the stormwater drainage.
And there's the reduction in the, in the area surface too, right? Yeah.
My understanding is that, is that they've gone through all of the other committees and, and they've generally gotten good results.
Correct. Um, I just want to make sure that when we do these findings, that we've found everything that we're saying we found, so. And fiscal impacts, including impacts on town services and tax base, I think, I think you've got through that. So Robbie, I, I am where you, what you summarized, I, I think that this has been properly vetted by the other boards. I'm comfortable with where it is now. I'm comfortable leaving the conditions as they are, Elizabeth, for you to wrap up any loose ends. And as much as we do have the ability to say that the facade will change, I think that would be a good thing to put in there. Again, just to make the point, I don't think it needs to be a pretend entrance, but I, just the windows matching more what's, what's in character with the area, I think, would, would make sense.
Yeah, I think sort of changes responsive to and in collaboration with the West Concord Advisory Committee and Town Planner, something along those lines, kind of gets
gets at it.
Gets me where I need to be.
Yep. What I would suggest is that for the first item in the planning board is that, that be prior to the issuance, I mean, prior to any site work that the applicant addressed to, to the engineering staff satisfaction, the concerns and questions raised in their September 3rd memo. I believe item in the planning board's recommendation for two, three, and four can be handled prior to the issuance of a building permit. And specifically different than a demolition permit so that they can, they can move forward. The fire department has asked to utilize the building for non-fire treating purposes for demolition. So.
Yeah. You've agreed to that? So that would.
I'd have to ask Mr. Tomano, he's the property owner, but I'm sure Chase would say yes if they owned it, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Tomano, you're aware of that condition, of that ask of the, oh, you're muted.
Got to be elevated, got to be promoted, Joe.
I think he just has to unmute himself.
Yes, I certainly agree with it. That's, that's fine. You know, we, before your information, just as a side issue, several months ago, I got a, I sent an email to the health department telling them that if they wanted to, I would allow them to use that building as a testing site. They could have used it as a drive-through testing site. They never got a response, but sure, it's fine for the fire department to do that. Matter of fact, if they want to have it a real fire, they could do that.
Whatever they want, all right.
Don't say that, Joe.
The state doesn't allow that anymore. For item four, it would be whether the the board would like myself and the West Concord Advisory Committee to review those changes or just based on the input from the planning board, have myself and, and it could be, and it can also be just one member, you know, of the Board of Appeals and myself to review those revised changes.
How have you done that in the past? Have you done anything like that in the past?
So there have, in the past, it's, for some projects, it's mostly been town staff who has reviewed them. There have been other projects where many times, like for HDC, they will have the senior planner and one member of the commission review some changes. So it's, it's been done both ways.
It, it doesn't bug me if you want to have one of us review it with you, if that's the easiest way to do it. Does that make sense to Robbie and Stuart?
Okay, with me.
Robbie?
Are you asking for volunteers?
Oh, I, I'm happy to do it if you, if you want to work with me, Elizabeth.
Right.
I, I.
I figure since you've gone through the whole design process with.
Yeah, I'll take everything I learned going through the HDC. No, I think that, I think that's fine. And you know the input from the West, West Concord Advisory Committee, so, yeah, that's fine.
So that's how I would propose those conditions be incorporated. And then as far as the decision, if the board can just quickly go through the site plan review, whether they agree with the planning board's recommendation as far as the findings under site plan, then what Heather and I will do for your decision is just modify that so that it is the board's findings.
Okay, so we're at 11.8.5, page three here.
So some of these would be modified based on those four, added four conditions.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So the sound and sight, first, kind of the lighting and.
Yep. So I would just amend those, these findings to that, you know, the board found, let's say, protection of adjoining premises by conditioning the project, that final review of stormwater drainage, the September 3rd memo from engineering, you know, is addressed or in that fashion.
Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I mean, I agreed with the planning board's findings. Again, with those changes that they, they have asked for. Robbie?
Yeah, I think, you know, adding those conditions is also consistent with the planning board recommendation. And I don't, I don't have anything in there that I would differ from. I'm happy to adopt those.
Stuart?
I'm okay too.
Hey. Uh, anything else, Elizabeth, that you think we've forgotten or, you know? All right, I'm, I'm ready to hear a motion then, if someone has on. Now Robbie, I am looking at you as, as volunteer.
Okay. Make a motion that the special permit and site and approval under section 7.2, 11.6, and 11.8 zoning bylaw by J.D. Morgan Chase Bank to demolish the existing bank building, construct a new bank building, and perform related site improvements, et cetera, et cetera, at 1134 Main Street be approved with the.
Modified findings in the planning board's recommendation letter and amended conditions of approval.
You're on mute again.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Robbie.
Okay.
He froze in the middle of his motion.
I had an internet blip. I'm back. But yes, with modified findings as discussed and recommended by the planning board and otherwise adopting their findings, additional can be discussed here.
Do I have a second?
Do you have a second, Stuart?
Okay.
All right, so I do roll call vote. Robbie Faya.
Hi.
Stuart Freeland.
Yes.
Elizabeth Akers-Moore, aye. That's it.
Well, thank you very much for your time. It was great to meet you all virtually.
You too.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, heading on to 7:05, Jill Angerman for the renewal of a special permit. Is Jill Angerman here?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, okay, this is Jill Angerman of 105 Walden Street in Concord, Massachusetts.
Hello.
And I am applying to renew my special permit for my home office.
Great. Um, reading the application, there are no changes to the operation, no changes to the building?
No.
Ray, have there been any complaints about this?
No, no, I haven't heard any complaints at all.
Okay. And this was five years that this has been, well, you, it's been longer than, or it has been five years?
Five years.
It's been five years, yep.
Great. Um, any questions from the board?
I made. No.
Go ahead and open it up to public comment. Heather, is there any public comment?
I don't see any.
Well, let's go ahead and close public comment. This seems incredibly straightforward to me and I don't see any issues with it, so I would be inclined to grant it if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll say so.
Sorry, what, Stuart?
I was gonna say so moved. I, I don't have the, the document in front of me, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem, I'll take care of it. Motion to approve the application of Jill Angerman for a special permit under sections 5.3, 6.2, 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for a special home occupation to operate a professional opposite 105 Walden Street on the same terms and conditions as the existing special permit, and it'll be for a further five years. Is that right?
Sounds right to me. Elizabeth, do we have anything?
Okay.
No, just to let Stuart know that there's something in front of his camera. It looks like his finger.
Stuart, there's something in front of your camera, potentially your hand.
Your hand.
It's down, down out of the way, I thought.
No, there's something in front of, uh.
Yeah.
I don't know what it, I don't know what it is.
Is it your thumb? Are you holding the iPad?
Well, yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm sitting on the couch and, and.
So I think.
Holding it up.
I think it's your thumb.
I don't, no, I don't understand.
There you go. There you go.
All right, now we can hear your second, if you want to second that.
Second.
All right, Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Freeland.
Hi.
Elizabeth Akers-Moore, aye. Thank you so much. Jill, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you so much. Bye-bye, you too. Bye-bye.
All right, moving on, 7:10 PM, Emerson Hospital. Not sure who's here to present for that. Anyone?
Somebody, Emerson Hospital, if you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Excellent. This is, this is Robert Drake from Emerson Hospital, Director of Facility and Operations. Where, we have a special permit at 54 Baker Ave that, for our PET scan docking station, and we're, today, we're asking to extend that special permit.
All right, any changes? The only thing I noticed is that, has this been extended, I mean, have we renewed this permit since, when was it, 2011 or something?
No, there was, it's, no. So there was a due diligence done on the property and we came across it. We didn't know that it existed, so we contacted the building department once we figured that out and applied for the zone.
Okay, so is this then still considered a renewal? I mean, technically, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
It, it, it doesn't have to, the decision can just say, you know, issue we have special permit, it doesn't have to state a renewal.
Okay, and there, so there's no changes to what's been going on since 2011?
No.
Okay.
No changes.
Ray, any, any issues on your end?
Nope, I haven't heard anything. No issues, no complaints.
Okay, any questions from Stuart or Robbie?
Nope.
My question is, why are we approving this under 5.4.1.3 that talks about temporary office when there is also a bylaw 5.4.1.4 that says we can authorize a mobile medical facility? I guess I don't really I have no problem with approving it as temporary office, but I just wonder why it's not the.
Under the specific thing that it is?
Yeah, which can also be a longer time period.
Yeah, so 5, 5.4. What was the section, Robbie? 5.?
5413 is what's listed on the application, and that's temporary office use for not more than two years. And then 5.4.1.4 says you can go more than two years if it's a mobile medical facility.
So I, I would definitely agree. It may be back in 2011, 5.4.1.4 wasn't in the bylaw. And maybe, it, it may have been added for something else on the Emerson campus, the main hospital campus. I, I haven't looked into when, when that section was adopted. But I, I think it's definitely more appropriate under 5414.
Robbie, is that, so that part about the adequate parking, it's the same as, just looking at the. There.
Well, it says adequate parking equivalent to a medical center and or lab use versus adequate parking for office use, but I mean, if you're using the office for medical center purposes, it's, I feel like it's the same standard.
So essentially, if we approved it under this, we could do it for up to 10 years as opposed to two.
Well, from, from Emerson's standpoint, the longer the better. You know, so, you know, whatever, whatever you guys would like.
Um, I'm fine with that. Elizabeth's fine with that. If Ray's fine with that in terms of the parking, then I think that makes a lot of sense. Considering no one remembered about this anyway for nine years.
Not our proudest moment.
That's all right. Um, okay.
Ray and, Ray and I hadn't returned, you know, I don't think we were here when, in 2011.
Yeah, and none of us on the board anyway, so, you know, let's blame all the people that worked before us. My God. So in that case, I don't see any other issues. I think extending it for 10 years makes sense unless someone felt that we should extend it for fewer.
So the only question I have.
I think so, if that's, if that's what Emerson is forecasting, there's still going to be.
Do you forecast?
No, I was going to ask just how long their current lease is on that building?
Uh, 2032.
Okay, so 10, 10 years makes sense.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Right, nope, sorry, we still got to vote on it.
I'm just, I'm just happy that Rob brought up the 10 year. I mean, I'm.
You can, Robbie is, will be giving you his business card later if you're interested in hiring legal work. Um, okay, so a motion?
Do we need public comment? Like, did we do it?
Oh, God. Of course, Robbie. Duh, I was just checking. Um, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up for public comment. Heather, nothing?
I don't see anybody.
I'm gonna close public comment. And now, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess, are, so we're allowed to amend the application, as it were, on the fly here because if, if the notice went to the public that this was an application under that subsection, which is max two years, in theory, somebody could say, oh, it's only two years, I don't care, I'm not going to go object to it. But if they do, it could be 10 years. I can, I, I think this is very theoretical. But just a check on whether we can actually amend applications kind of this way.
I believe we have in the past.
So the, the board has in, you know, the past discussed the zoning bylaw and I I don't see, I don't see an issue with it since it's a more appropriate section under the bylaw. It, I would have more of a, a problem if somebody applied under one section and the board tried to approve it under a different section where it was less appropriate. I think 5414 is more, a more appropriate section because it specifically is a mobile medical PET scan.
Right.
Unit. So I don't, I don't have an issue with the, the board finding that that's a more appropriate section under the bylaw. Unit, so I don't, I don't have an issue with the, the board finding that that's a more appropriate section under the bylaw.
Yeah, Robbie, I mean, I guess if you're comfortable with that, I see your point. I hate to say it, but I, I do see it. Again, I agree, I think it's probably more theoretical than anything else.
Yeah, and I guess theoretically then it's even less of a renewal than, than we already saying it would be, so I, I guess we'll just approve the issuance of the special permit.
I, I would suggest that you just issue this as a new special permit and not a renewal since the previous special permit expired eight years ago.
It's hard to renew, it expires.
Right. Okay. In that case, we're ready for a motion?
We are.
Okay, I move that the application of Emerson Hospital for the issuance of a special permit under section 5.4.1.4 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to allow the use of a mobile pet scan unit at 54 Baker Avenue extension be approved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Faya.
Aye.
And this is for, aye. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, studio in the, I. I don't know who, who's the. Sorry, who's presenting for this one?
Hi, that's Tim Hess with Studio.
Great. 7:15 and we are at 7:55, so that's great. All right, go ahead. Hello.
Good evening. The, Elizabeth, have you got, Elizabeth Hughes, have you got the materials and can you share your screen?
Yes.
While she's, while she's pulling that up, I can just introduce the, the broad strokes. I'm here, I believe Tondi and Mike Muna, the homeowners, are both with us this evening. They're at 1887 Main Street. They are in, currently living in a, a. Small. Single-story ranch on this parcel. The current home is 1,100 square feet. Let me find my math. Total existing gross floor area, the current home is 1,324 square feet. We're proposing to. Reduce that by, I believe, 240 by. Demolishing a small sunroom and then enlarge it by 720 by adding. The image you see in front of you is the garage, two-story garage on a lower level and a 720-square-foot studio on the upper level. We're here for a special permit because the. Lot at present is non-compliant. We're in the residence B zone. We are undersized in frontage and in area. Our proposal would meet all of the. Setback and other requirements. We have another item in regard to the floor area ratio. We're underneath the max FAR, but over that threshold. Which would require a special permit. As well. So. If. Elizabeth, if we could just flip through. The images, thank you. So we see. Yeah, so this, this small scale, moving a little fast. So here's, here's a site plan of the proposed, we had an image a second ago, I think it's forward, that will compare the existing and the proposed. There we go.
Hang on.
Yep.
My wife is not happy.
Okay, so these are lower level and first floor plans, all four elevations and then a, a kind of street-side perspective view, conditions as they exist today at 1887. In the image. Element number four, at the top center, you can, the, the small greenhouse is visible, we proposed, thank you, to remove that. And if you flip to the next page, we'll see the proposed condition. Great, thank you very much. So the corresponding upper center image. You can see the greenhouse removed and in the foreground now, which would be behind the house, away from Main Street and facing south, we can see the upper level studio over the lower-level garage. Element six, so center-left, this would be the elevation facing east, of course, so in that view, Main Street is running into and out of the screen, just to the right of the house. The north elevation now center, center is the Main Street elevation, so you can see the existing home is largely untouched and the proposed addition will be behind it. Very visible in this sort of abstracted elevation projection. And considerably less visible in a, in an actual perspective view, which you could see down lower right of this sheet. And then element one, center-right is the west elevation, so in this view, Main Street would be to the left of that element and the rear of the lot is to the right. The planned views on the lower-left of the sheet, we see the proposed condition. The, the, the lower level is a two-car garage. We have. Proposed that. The building be set back far enough from the side yard setback to enable. Mike and Tondi to pull in. From a kind of perpendicular driveway, pull into the garage, then pull back out so that when they enter onto Main Street or Route 62 traffic from home. They can do it facing out through the, through the windshield of the car rather than, at present, they're backing out. They've got just a couple of parking spaces that, you know, and no space to turn around in the, in the current condition. And then the, the bottom center, we see the proposed condition of the upper floor, the finished condition space in the studio. We see. Well, I suppose, I should mention that between the existing home and the proposed, we have a small deck area, you can see a kind of generous width stair that spills down toward the left or the east here and a kind of driveway area. And then directly above that, there's a kind of vertical plane wall. Half a flight of stairs approximately up to the level of. The studio and spaces distributed clockwise from lower-left. There's a storage closet off of the entry, upper-left, there's a kind of elongated storage area. The main space in, in the kind of. Upper and to the right is the studio and then tucked around back at about 6 o'clock within the plan is a bathroom accessible from a couple of sides. So this, I think that's a pretty good introduction to the overall. There may be a couple of other images worth looking at here. If, Elizabeth, if you would scroll, please, to the next. Yeah, these are just the architectural, as a closer look at, at things we've seen. Happy to get into that if you're interested. We should probably have a look at the certified plot plan. So. The dimensional notations, I believe, are the same, but this is not the stamped certified plot plan which, which got to your office just today. I can call it up on my screen if you don't have access to it at the moment.
So. Sure.
We try that?
Yep.
Okay, and let's see, how do I share my screen? I think I can do that. And let's do this one. Okay, does that look right?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe I'll try to zoom in a little bit. So you can see the existing building, the proposed addition, our side yard setback, front yard, side yard to the west, rear setback to the north, in the position of our proposed outbuilding. We do have, it's probably worth noting, the dash line here and here. We've got a considerable cantilever, the second floor is longer by, I believe it's eight feet than the first, so it projects east and west.
Great. Very helpful.
Yeah, so if that's, that's all the overview I've got at the moment, but if there's specific questions, I'm happy to answer those or try to cover any ground I missed.
Sure. No, that's very helpful. Yeah, this was my question about the, where you were in the setbacks here, so. Any questions from Robbie or Stuart? Are you proposing any screening along either the, the side of the closest to your neighbor there? The, the cantilever's out, you said, another, how far?
Another four feet beyond that heavy line you see there.
Is, is there any screening on that side towards the, the, the butter?
There is an existing stockade fence.
And is that, is gonna stay as is?
Proposed to remain. There, there is not any additional screening that at, at this time has been considered.
Robbie and Stuart, any questions?
No, no, I've actually seen that property.
So, no questions from me, actually.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is open up to public comments. As far as I know, we haven't received anything on this, so. Why don't I go ahead and do that? Any public comments?
I was just, this is Susan, who is a neighbor and.
Sorry, can you say your whole name and your address?
Oh, it's Susan Muller. We're at 5 Hill Lane. And, and it's great to see progress in the neighborhood. I was just wondering what the colors are gonna be like of the, of the outside.
I don't think we've got a color rendering I can show you readily, but it's proposed to be. Cedar shingles that are left to weather. Well, I should be, I should be more thorough. Let me go back to, if I've still got the screen here. So. This image is pretty representative. Susan, can you see that pretty well?
On the wrong page. Yeah, yeah, I can't really see colors, but just as long as it sort of ties into the. You know, the, what, what's there. I know that their, their roof definitely, I was thinking when they were gonna put something on, they would be taking that roof off, which is obviously in, older than, you know, is, has moss and things on it, but as long as like, it's sort of consistent, it's not, we're going from old to modern or something like that.
So the, sorry, I'm just moving a little slowly, trying to expand the view for you. So all of this material stepping down the stair is. A wood decking and that same wood decking would turn up in this area where you see my cursor. The whole upper floor here is a white cedar shingle. In this small area here, I should specify, this is a red cedar board, sorry, red cedar tongue and groove, so it's a small delineated area at the corner that would be. You know, when those materials are new, they'll look, they'll have some significant difference in coloration and that difference will diminish pretty quickly with weathering over time, within probably five years, it'll be a very, they'll both be a pretty subtle gray. And the, in the lower zone here, it's really mostly garage door in this view and then a window and moving around the corner in that view. But we are proposing exposed concrete in the visible spots in this view. It's those piers left and right of the door. But it's all, it's all natural material, there's not, apart from window sash and frames, there is not any paint here.
And what is the roof, the color, is the roof, are the roofs gonna sort of match or?
The, it's a bit of a value engineering question. At the moment, we're hopeful that it'll be a standing seam metal in a dove gray color with an inch and a half seam.
Okay. Susan, any other questions?
No, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for staying natural.
Happy to do it, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. To me, this seems like a modest proposal. Not out of keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. So I would be inclined to grant it. Robbie or Stuart, any thoughts?
I'm with you.
Yeah, I think in the past, we've said that, you know, if you're, if you're staying under 2,500 square feet. You know, we might even. Think to amend this bylaw at some point in the future to, to avoid having to get a special permit if you're in that range, in that sort of modest size range. I agree with you, we're, we're there, it's. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this.
Okay. Elizabeth or Ray, any, any problems you see, anything we should be looking at?
I don't see any problems. I mean, the new addition meets the setbacks and like Robbie said, it's a really modest structure, even after the addition.
Right. Yep. All right. I think then, do we wanna do some, Robbie? You wanna make a motion and maybe talk about some of our findings?
Yeah, I, you know, I think one other thing to point out is there, there is actually the improvement to, you know, traffic flow and safety with the.
So Robbie.
Yeah, Robbie, you're cutting out.
Which is one of the, one of the factors for the special permit, I think.
You're breaking up. I think what you were saying is that there's increased safety with the driveway configuration, is that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the plus to traffic flow and safety concerns, one of the factors for the special permit. You know, I think. You know, it's, it's. I don't see anywhere it. You know, where there's any adverse effects outweighing the, the improvements to the property and the. You know, the, there's no. improvements to the property and the, you know, the, there's no, you know, I don't see that the non, any non-conformities here are being extended. I don't see that any, you know, that there's detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. You know, I think, to your point about the screening, it does look like the, where that new structure is on the lot is kind of behind where the neighboring house is, so it's not like they're going to be looking into a neighbors where they currently aren't, which I think is also helpful, so. I think considering all those factors, I think this meets the requirements for a special permit for, you know, the intent of the bylaws around extending the structure on an unconform lot. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the application of Studio Institute Architectsing for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1. Final 11.6 of zoning bylaw to instruct 1,044 square footage on a 1,324 square foot dwelling that will increase the gross floor area by 1% on an unconforming lot at 1887 Main Street.
Subject to the plans submitted. Elizabeth, anything else to add, or just standard conditions? And Elizabeth's still there?
Yes, yes. No, I have, I have nothing, nothing else to add.
That's great. All right, so hearing a second from Stuart, Mr. Fia.
Hi.
Mr. Freeland.
Hi.
And Ms. Akeris Moore, aye. Application is approved. Thank you guys very much.
Terrific, thanks so much. Appreciate your help.
Have a good night.
I know.
Moving on, so the minutes, we're in administrative business, just quickly, the minutes from Divine 9th, I guess we already approved, but it wasn't listed on the last agenda? Heather, I have that right, right?
That's correct.
So now that it is listed and nothing has changed from when we last spoke about them, we just need to approve them again.
Motion to approve the July 9th minutes.
Stuart, was that a second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Fia.
Hi.
Mr. Freeland.
Hi.
And Ms. Akeris Moore, aye. Moving on to the Sweet Birch PRD Performance Guarantee final release. Elizabeth, I'm looking at you.
Yep. So Black Birch 2, which is now called Sweet Birch, they have completed all of the required landscaping. There were a couple of modifications that I found when I went out there to do the final inspection, but they have been adequately addressed, and all the other departments have signed off. So this applicant provided a performance guarantee, which was a restrictive covenant, saying the lots could not be sold until they, certain improvements were made. Lot 14 or unit 14 is the final unit to be sold in the development. So once this unit is released, then it is a release of this unit as well as a release of the performance guarantee. So the project is done.
Hey, all right. Well, that sounds like it went pretty smoothly on that end, so you don't have any issues? I don't have any issues. Anyone else?
No.
All right.
Do we need a vote on that one?
Yep, so the board would be moving to issue the lot release for lot 14 and release the performance guarantee for Black Birch 2 PRD.
All right, so moved.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Fia.
Hi.
Mr. Freeland.
Hi.
Ms. Akeris Moore, aye. Okay, last but not least, 612 Barrett's Mill Road.
Hello.
Hi, Jen.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Hi, is it okay to be on video in these? Everyone's not on video, so.
Oh, no, no, it's good. No, we're happy to see you. Hello.
Liz Martin, my partner's here, and so is Marshall, our architect, just in case we have questions, but.
Sure.
So, just a quick little update on this project. A year ago, we were awarded a special permit to convert a single dwelling home at 612 Barrett's Mill Road to a two-family dwelling pursuant to section 4221 of the zoning bylaw. And included in that permit was the promise that any historical materials that we were not able to use in the project would be salvaged and connected with either libraries or cultural preservation groups or moved on to restoration projects. While it was in the proposal that the chimneys and the internal walls would be coming out of the project, we did commit to working to preserve the architectural elements of the exterior front facade, including the front door surrounds, window casings and sills, roof eaves, corner coins at the main house, front, left and right, front corners, and reconstruct, reconstructing faux chimneys to preserve the look of the front elevation. Our non-structural demo permit was issued, which allowed our engineers to create construction documents. While we were working on that, we did a really great project with Save Our Heritage, and three entire rooms on the front floor and all that beautiful paneling was meticulously preserved, treated for any insects, and stored away for future integration, actually, into the National Historical Park, which was a really great project. Anna sent a letter to that effect to you guys. And then our full permit was granted on April 10th. We began further removal of any of the materials that were not to be used in the project, and carefully storing those that we're going to be able to use, got down to the posts and beams. And although the roof wasn't specified either in the special permit or in our proposed plans, we were trying to assess if we could keep the roof rafters and the sheathing. At that point, our builder and our engineer flagged a safety concern. We were trying to see if by removing the front portion of the roof, we could better preserve it and then try to rebuild it back on later if that would be possible. So our builder reached out to the building department, and there seemed to be some kind of misunderstanding around the project. I'm not really sure what that misunderstanding was, but Elizabeth was kind enough to squeeze us in tonight so that we could answer any questions and clarify any points. So here we are.
Okay, and yeah, that's what, so we kind of had been asked to clarify, so the roof and both side walls are now coming down. Ray?
The sides are not coming down in their entirety, no.
Okay, good.
The back portion where we're putting, if you look at the plans, it's
Do we have any of those?
Do we have those available? Yeah, so a good portion of both of the front side walls, more so if you're facing the house, the one on the left, a bit more of it. The one on the right is the one that had that Beverly jog. And unfortunately, remember, we were discussing a way to try to keep it, but with the containment of the square footage, we couldn't, so that has to come off. But yeah, the, the front and, and the eaves as well, because that's really key around the eaves in the front.
I'm sorry, so Elizabeth, do you have, is it easily accessible? Sorry.
I think they were reposted to the meeting documents website.
They, yeah, under tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
So there you can see the side elevation.
Yep. Okay.
This is the front.
Yes.
This is, so Barrett's Mill's basically in the front.
Yes.
And I think
Can you hear me? This is Marshall on the plane.
Yes, hi, Marshall.
Hi. Probably be helpful to scroll down to the first page, the first floor plan.
Scroll, scroll up.
Oh, scroll up, rather. So you can see here that the front wall and some portion of the side walls on both sides would be retained, but then the building changes shape, the footprint changes from the original
Right around where the kitchen
Original rectangle, if you don't count that, the addition on the, the existing addition on the right. And the footprint, and so there's all new building from that point back in the form of a new footprint and new foundations and that kind of thing.
Elizabeth, can you just run your cursor over that, where the new foundations and new footprint are?
You can see it in the foundation plan as well to the left.
I think, so right here is the existing
That's all, yeah, that's all new foundation there.
That's the existing outline of the
And since, and also, yeah, right, exactly.
Ray, are you still here?
I am.
Hi, Ray. Do you have any comments on this, or things you wanted to bring your attention?
Well, so, you know, getting back to what Jen said, so they did receive their building permit in April, and on August 28th, I got an email from the contractor, and that's what he brought to my attention, the structural engineer, Marshall, and his opinion that the front roof, it would be better to shore up the wall, the front wall, and remove the front roof. and my, well, so I told the contractor, I have to go back and read the board appeals special permit to see how the decision was written. And I, after reading the decision, I wasn't comfortable with, with the project moving forward without the board revisiting this. So in my experience here for 14 years, whenever there's been a special permit, and there's changes to the special permit, that a substantial change, which, like, so if you had two windows and you removed the window, you know, that wasn't substantial change, so we, we would let them move forward with that, but when there's substantial change, like I said, it's been my experience that we have the board weigh in on it. This is a little bit more of a demolition than I expected, I don't know what the board expected. So that's why we're here.
Okay. Robbie and Stuart, thoughts? I've got to be honest, I haven't completely wrapped my head around what were the
So we requested permission to take the roof off, but at no point did we commit to keeping the roof. So I'm not, I, I'm totally fine with clarifying, but there's no change to our architectural plan, and there's no change to our initial proposal. I think we're just trying to maybe clarify that.
Okay, so I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, too. So when you look at the plant, they're exactly the same. Ray, you're uncomfortable that we didn't, may not have realized that the whole, that roof is coming off and being replaced with a new roof?
Correct. In the decision, it, I, it talks about converting the existing single-family dwelling. You know, renovations, the permit is to renovate the existing property, so, like, again, whichever way the board decides is fine. I just, I just want to make sure the project moves forward properly.
Okay, yeah. I will say that my recollection is that this property, they were going to do the best they could with saving what they could, so I have to say, I don't, this doesn't really faze me. Robbie and Stuart, I don't know, I'm not surprised that you found it structurally unstable.
And I think, you know, part of when we were deliberating, I think the point was made that they were past the demolition review period, so somebody could have just come in and torn the whole thing down.
I will say, it's been, it's been really rewarding, the work we've done with Save Our Heritage, and then we also worked with a group called the Glastonbury Restoration Company and 18th and 19th century recycling. So everything down to hardware, doorknobs, every, every little tiny piece that could be salvaged is either going to end up in the National Historical Park or is living on in preservation projects throughout New England, which has been really rewarding and just from a personal perspective, it's been nice to know that that material doesn't get destroyed, but.
Yeah.
It's very nice to hear that that commitment was followed through and actually, you know, I think performed beyond what my expectations have been at the time we approved this. So, you know, I think that, I think the overall spirit of, of the project seems the same to me as what, as what we were contemplating. And I, you know, I, I think it would be odd to say that because of a safety issue that was discovered afterwards, you know, that, that changes how we view what, what they were doing here, so I, you know, I, I, you know, I do see where we say selective demolition in the, in the language of the permit, and construction of an addition, but, you know, if, I can easily see that, you know, replacing the roof fits into the, the meaning of that, that kind of language that's in the, that's in the permit.
Yeah, and I mean, Ray, I really appreciate that you came back to us with clarification, but I agree with Robbie, to me, this has been done very sympathetically, and I have no issues with it. Stuart?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. We vote on anything, or Ray, just you take our word that we're happy with it?
So I'd like to suggest, just so that there's something in the street address file, that we can just write a, a letter that goes into the street address file that, you know, the, on, you know, September 10th, the board, you know, provided clarification on the decision determined it was their understanding that the applicant would do the best they could to save various structural elements in the building if they could, but that structural issues have been identified with the roof, that replacement is required. The board determined that the replacement of the roof will not change the architectural elevations as shown on the approved plans, and finds the replacement of the roof consistent with the board's decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks, Elizabeth. So we don't have to vote on that, we were just telling you. Would you like us to vote on it? You look like you want us to vote on it.
You know what? No, I, I think it's, you know, the consensus of the board, and if Ray's okay with that language.
Ray, are you okay with that?
I'm good with any language that goes in the file that says it's all right for the roof to come off, so when somebody, if I do get calls from neighbors, concerned citizens, that, you know, this is what the board agreed to.
That would never happen. I don't know what you're talking about. Um, yeah, okay. No, I think that's great. I do appreciate, Ray, the, the coming back to us, and I still think it's a great project, so.
And I just want to say, I wasn't trying to delay the project, I was just trying to prevent problems down the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I did not read it that way. I'm not the applicant, but I did not read it.
We're always happy to clarify things. This is a, you know, it's a great project, but you're, you know, we want to make sure that people are calling, Ray, he has what he needs, so happy to be here and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you, thank you guys for, for coming and clarifying that, and good luck going forward. And I think that's the end of our whole meeting, right? Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Yay. Second, Stuart. Freeland, yes, aye, everyone aye, right?
Aye.
Bye, Freeland. Okay, bye, everyone. Talk to you later.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Back to my one glass.
Bye.